My name is Amanda Cruzy. I'm the Public Affairs Chief for the St. Louis District. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I'd also like to thank the city. You guys have been very gracious, posting us come two weeks in a row. So I'm sure you're gonna miss us next week. So tonight, we're gonna have a presentation. Michelle Meep is actually going to do the presentation here in just a few minutes on the reevaluation of tributaries and recreation features for St. Genevieve. We will have a question and answer session after the presentation. So I just ask that you listen to the entire presentation, and then any questions that you have will be answered afterwards. We've got quite a team of experts here tonight. So any questions you have, that's why we're here. We want to get your input. We want to get your feedback and get your comments. So please feel free to talk to us, engage with us. You know, this is your opportunity to tell us what you think. It's a tentatively selected plan, so we want your feedback. With that being said, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Michelle. I did want to introduce John Peiger. So he is our District Deputy Engineer for Program and Project Management. So you guys can remember that at the end.
(inaudible)
Yeah, so he's also here to answer any questions.
Small fun.
So anyways, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Michelle, and we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you, guys.
All right. As she said, my name is Michelle Meep. I'm the Study Manager on this. Dennis is our Project Manager. But I'm the one primarily responsible for making sure the study is done for our procedures and our requirements. So I'm going to do a brief presentation tonight. As I said, we'll have a question and answer session afterward. So please hold your questions and comments. So basically, I do want to thank you for coming. I know it's Thanksgiving week. You probably have a lot of things to do. Thank you for being here. We are looking forward to hearing your feedback. What we have done to date is we produced a draft -- sorry, a draft report that documents what we've done during the study and presents tentatively selected plans for the three parts that remain on the St. Genevieve project. And that's the Tributary Improvements and the Recreation Plan. And the word "tentatively selected plan" is important here because we have -- these are not final plans. We don't make the plans final until we've gotten feedback from the public and from other agencies. Once we get that feedback, we'll sit down with the city. We'll go over everything, decide if anything needs to be adjusted, and then produce the final report. And that'll happen sometime next spring. So let's go ahead and -- this is what we're gonna do. Like I said, I'll go into some background. I'll talk about what we did during the study to arrive at our tentatively selected plans. I will describe those plans in a decent amount of detail, and then we'll talk a little bit about where do we go from here. And then at the end, we'll have some time for questions and comments. Okay, so the feasibility study on this project was completed in 1984. And two years later, in 1986, Congress authorized the project based on the historic resources that are here in St. Genevieve. And that authorized project included four parts. There was the Mississippi River levee, tributary improvements on both creeks. So that's Parts Two and Three. And then Part Four was a Recreation Plan. The tributary improvements included canal widening for long stretches of both creeks, bridge replacements, and a few small levees. Work began on the Mississippi River levee first. And as it was nearing completion in about 1999, we started to begin looking at designing the work on the tributary components. When we started looking at it, we realized that a lot of things had changed since 1984. And we needed to go back and reassess whether the authorized project was still the best plan, given these changes. So the two most important changes were as a result of the flood of '93 and then some regulatory changes. The flood of 1993, you all recall, there were many buyouts that occurred after that flood. Some of the structures along the creeks were part of those buyouts. So we had fewer structures along the creeks. We also had -- when those structures gone, we had a little more space along the creeks. So there was a possibility of having different actions we could take that would reduce the damages, but maybe at a less cost. And then we also -- it was more important than ever to protect the remaining historic resources. So the regulatory changes were primarily with regard to realizing over time that channelization of streams is incredibly harmful to the environment. And in recognition of that, we had now requirements to add mitigation for that work. And that had never been included in the '84 report. So we needed to go back, assess what that would be, and determine if that was still in the best interest of the community. As we began the study, we had these objectives in mind. We wanted to maximize the number of structures that we were reducing damages to and minimize displacement of the people and the businesses in the community. We wanted to reduce the economic losses and the social disruptions that happened as a result of flooding. And we wanted to be mindful of the environment and the cultural resources while we were doing it. And additionally, we wanted to increase recreation opportunities and minimize the operation and maintenance costs that the city would have to bear on whatever we recommended. So we looked at the two -- the watersheds of the two creeks. The next two slides are just real quick to show you the watersheds. On here, this is a topographic map. The North Gavry Creek watershed is shown in red. And the blue line down the middle is the main channel coming through there. This is the same thing on the South Creek. And what we did during the study is we looked at the entirety of both watersheds, not just from assessing the flood impacts, but also for looking at opportunities to reduce those impacts. We got out there. We had to update a bunch of data. We did some more mapping. We had some models that needed to be updated. The hydraulic model was the primary one that needed to be updated. And that one estimates how deep water gets in different parts of the cities for different kinds of flood events. So we looked at events from the 50% chance-of-succidence event. So that's normally called -- commonly called a two-year event, all the way up through the 0.2% event, which is commonly called the 500-year event. So that's the last time I'm gonna do percentages, okay? I'm gonna call it the two-year and the 500-year from here on out because that's what normal people would refer them to in the community. So we also looked at what structures were out there currently. Got some data on them, first-floor elevations, what kind of structures and foundations they had. And then we compared those flood depths to the structures and to determine how much each one was getting damaged at each kind of event. Then we used all that information. We also identified, sorry, which structures were designated as historic resources. So looked at all of that and then started formulating which kind of alternatives do we need to look at to determine -- to reduce damages due to flooding. So this is a quick snapshot of that, the results of that analysis. And that's a little bit complicated and probably a little small from the back. But I'll try to describe what you see here. On the top half, here are all the flood events we looked at for North Gavry Creek. And then here, South Gavry Creek, the same events on both creeks. The -- each column, the first column shows how many historic structures are damaged for those events. The next one is how many nonhistoric structures are damaged. And then this last column has a total of those two columns coming across. And as you go down each column, totals are cumulative. So for instance, at the two-year event on North Gavry Creek, we have one structure damaged. That same structure is damaged at the five-year event. But when you get to the 10-year event, we add two more structures for a total of three. And then that just continues down. And so what we end up with on North Gavry Creek are a total of eight structures damaged at the 500-year event and 10 structures damaged at the 500-year event on the south. So to look -- to consider ways to address those damages, we looked back at the authorized plan again. We updated it for current conditions and requirements. We looked at plans to replace bridges or remove some of the lime deposits that are in the bottom of South Gavry Creek. We looked at widening just a portion of South Gavry Creek downstream of Main Street. We looked at several different locations and heights for levees and the same for detention. And then lastly, we included nonstructural solutions, which include things like buyouts and relocations and floodproofing. In the end, we ended up looking at 21 different alternatives on the North Creek and 25 on the south. Oh, good, the colors showed up. So this is a list of the different alternatives we considered. The ones highlighted in green are the ones that we determined were effective, and we would carry them into the final analysis. The ones not highlighted are the ones that were either ineffective, uneconomical for some reason, or they were damaging to historic resources to a level that was unacceptable. So here's what we ended up. It's five different alternatives, three on the North Creek and two on the south. We have the original authorized plans of channelization, again, updated to reflect current conditions. We had a levee plan on the North Creek. And then we had nonstructural plans for both creeks. So we'll get a little bit into what each of these involve. The authorized plan on both creeks, I'm gonna talk about both of them on one slide here. So basically, it's channel widening for -- to create a 20-foot bottom width and some stable side slopes. North Gavry, that extends from just downstream of Main Street, actually about where the Double Railroad Bridge is, up to a point a little bit upstream of Fourth Street. And on the South Gavry, it was from the Burlington Northern Railroad all the way up to Highway 61. All the bridges in those stretches would need to be replaced. In some cases, if they were -- if they were no longer needed, they could be abandoned. But I think the estimate included replacing almost all of them. And there was the associated mitigation that would be needed for that channelization work. So the levee on the North Creek ran from high ground behind those homes on the west side of Sixth. Ran pretty much along the north side of the creek all the way down to Main Street. At one point, up near Sixth Street, it would cut across a meander of the creek. So we'd have to realign the channel. And there was mitigation involved with that. A pump station would be needed for times when the river -- when the creek was up and there was a heavy rainfall on the interior. We could not find enough ponding area to hold that water without flooding people on the interior of the levee, which you never want to do. So we had to add a pump station in for that. And then the Fourth Street Bridge was replaced. This plan had negative impacts to two historic structures. Pretty significant negative impacts. It also -- I apologize, because I forgot to tell you how much the other alternatives cost. This is an 11 -- this alternative was about $11 million. Back on this slide, the North Gavry plan has an estimated cost of, I think, $16 million. And the South Gavry plan was $29 million, I believe. I will check those in just a second because I have all the costs on another slide. So for nonstructural on both creeks, nonstructural actions pretty much come in three flavors. You can buy out the structures and demolish them, similar to what was done after '93. You can floodproof them, or you can relocate them. And we had extensive conversations with the state Historic Preservation Officer's Staff and determined that both buyouts and relocations were not going to be acceptable. They were entirely too damaging to the historic nature of the city. Therefore, we were left with floodproofing. And floodproofing, that things come in threes. Floodproofing is basically is done in one of three ways. We have dry floodproofing, which essentially you keep the water out of the structure. In that case, an example would be installing temporary barriers in doors or windows to keep the water out. That works well if you have enough warning. But unfortunately, we're dealing with flash flooding on these creeks. And we felt that there would not be enough warning time to get those barriers in place. Therefore, we decided we would not recommend dry floodproofing for any structures. Wet floodproofing is the opposite. Now you let the water in, okay? In this case, you only want to do that if it's below the first floor, okay? If it gets above the first floor, we tend to look at elevation. But first, let me tell you about wet floodproofing. So this works if it's below the first floor. You let the water in under the structure into a basement or a crawl space. You remove damageable things out of that area, okay? So elevation is essentially the same thing, except for if the flooding is getting to the first floor, then you also, in addition to all that other stuff, if you just did wet floodproofing, you also want to raise up the first floor above the flood elevation. I'll talk a little bit more detail on those in a second. There's probably lots of questions. So we had those five final alternatives. And Congress, when they'd authorized the project, had given us special language. Normally, on a project, a flood risk project, we would be calculating economic costs and benefits and comparing the costs and the benefits to determine which is the best plan to select. A really rough example would be if we want to build a levee, we look at the cost of building the levee and we compare it to the damages prevented over time. And those are our benefits. So if your benefits are greater than your costs, then that's a good plan from our perspective, and it could be possibly recommended. In this case, Congress said, "You have historic resources in St. Genevieve who have value that you cannot quantify in an economic fashion, okay? So don't worry about the economic value. Just protect the resources." So we did not have to do a regular economic analysis for this study. So instead of that, we looked at the costs of the alternatives. We looked at their cultural impact and their environmental impacts. So once again, we did not look at economics. Here are those numbers. And I was very close. So this is displaying on the left side all the alternatives for each creek. The second column shows the estimated cost of construction for those items. And then the last two columns show how much of that total cost is made up of environmental mitigation and cultural resources mitigation. So it's -- while those exact numbers are not super critical to understanding the decision-making, it does give you a glimpse into what kind of impacts each plan has. So basically, in looking at this, you can see from a total cost perspective, floodproofing comes in at much less cost than any of the other options on both creeks. It also has no environmental impacts. And it has the least amount of cultural impacts. So based on that, based on the fact that it's the least cost and has the least impacts from both a cultural and environmental standpoint, we have tentatively selected floodproofing as our plan to go forward with. This table lists the structures by structure number, and I'll get to that in a second. But by structure number of all the structures flooded up through the 100-year event. And as I said earlier, we did look at flooding all the way up through 500-year. We chose to stop at 100 years because the -- there are only a handful of structures that are flooded at events of greater than 100-year. And those events are much more rare. So we made a decision that it made sense to stop at 100 years. The structure numbers on the left side are not -- they don't correspond to addresses. They -- we don't put addresses in our reports. If you have a structure that is on this list, I hope you have already been notified. We did have a meeting with homeowners last week who had been notified. If you haven't been notified, but you think maybe you might be on the list, I encourage you to look at the maps that are in the main report that show which structures are circled, which ones are proposed to have floodproofing methods applied to them. And we also have copies of those maps here with us tonight. So we could look at them with you if you choose. So the second column shows which of these structures are historic. The third column, you can see that by and large, we're recommending wet floodproofing for most of the structures. And that's because the flood levels don't reach the first floor for most structures. There were two structures that the flood levels are projected to reach the first floor. One of them, you can see here on the South Creek, we felt was a good candidate for elevation, so we're recommending that. The other one, unfortunately, due to its -- the nature of its construction and its age is not a good candidate for elevation. And because the flood is on the first floor, wet floodproofing isn't gonna work. And dry floodproofing, as we talked before, isn't gonna work. So unfortunately, we can't recommend an action for that structure. Let's talk about what wet floodproofing looks like in a little more detail. This is a -- no specific structure, just a diagram. In fact, it's out of one of FEMA's documents. So basically, you relocate any utilities or home systems. So there's like a washer and dryer here and a water heater. Pull them up out of any basement space. Anything else that's stored down there would need to come up and out. If you have an AC that's sitting on the ground outside, you could also bring that up. Once that's done, we would fill any basement space with sand or BP gravel up to within 30 inches of the floor joist. And the rationale for that is that we're trying to prevent damages. So we can't allow people to be using that space. And it's also a safety hazard in the event of flooding because what we're gonna do is we're gonna install vents to let water in. And that's gonna help equalize the hydrostatic pressures and also allow water to flow back out. So in this case, if you did have a basement and you had a concrete floor, we'd be breaking that up to let water drain out the bottom as well. Elevation, as I said earlier, very similar to wet floodproofing. We would do all that stuff that I just talked about if there was a basement. We would do all that same stuff. But in addition to that, we would be raising up. You can see here, there's like a scaffolding sort of thing and a jack. And we'd be raising that up. And we would need to evaluate whether the existing foundation is sufficient to build on, to raise the foundation walls up to the floor, or whether the whole foundation would need to be replaced. And that last bullet just says the same thing about filling the basement. So one thing I really want to make sure everybody understands is that participation in these floodproofing measures is completely voluntary. And for anybody who chooses not to participate, it's as simple as we'll have a form or a letter to sign that says, "I choose not to participate," and we'll keep it on file. If you do choose to participate, the Corps and the city would execute a floodproofing agreement with the homeowner. The Corps would provide specifications. How high does everything need to be? What kind of things are gonna -- what kind of stuff we're gonna put in that basement to fill it? The homeowner will hire the contractor themselves. I don't have the details about how payment will happen right now. But the goal is that the homeowner won't be paying for it out of their own pocket. But they do -- we do want -- they do need to have that direct arrangement with the contractor. There's a possibility that during the contract, the occupants won't be able to be in the house for safety reasons for a period of time. If that happens, tenants, and there may be some tenants out there, they would be relocated at project expense for the duration of however long they have to be out. If the owner is occupying the house, they will have to provide their own temporary housing during that time. And that sounds a little strange, but the rationale behind it is that the homeowner is gonna realize a benefit from this, a financial benefit from reduced damages. And so they should participate in this by providing their own temporary housing. Tenants are not realizing any benefit from it from a financial standpoint. Therefore, we'll cover the cost of relocating them temporarily. The homeowner afterward will maintain the house as usual, complete control of the house, normal maintenance. There -- we did -- we have had some discussions with FEMA. And there are some possibilities that there could be reductions in flood insurance premiums for folks who have the basements filled. That basically raises the lowest elevation of your house up, and that can reduce premiums. Also, elevating utilities would -- they tell us it would reduce premiums in most cases. But it's gonna be -- that premium reduction would be evaluated and determined on a case-by-case basis for each house because each house will be handled separately and what exactly will be done to modify it. I hope you didn't think I forgot about the Recreation Plan. Right now, it's a pretty simple plan. We've got an asphalt surface trail on top of the levee, a small parking area about midway down the levee, and the associated signs and benches and lighting to make it safe and user-friendly. That cost is about a little over half a million dollars. And we did have to do an economic analysis on that one. It has a positive benefit-to-cost ratio. So here is a summary of the costs and the cost sharing. This gets into a little bit maybe more detail than I should have done. But I'll just, in summary, if you add the three costs, the costs of the three components together, you get a little over $1.6 million. For the flood risk projects, which is the work on North and South Gavry Creeks, the cost-sharing requirement is 25% local, 75% federal. So 25% of almost $1.1 million is this 273 and change. And now on the Recreation Components, the cost-sharing requirement is 50% local. So you can see here the 267 and change for the Recreation, for a total local contribution of $540,000. So that is everything I have tonight. Before we get into questions and comments, though, I do want to say that I mentioned earlier, and I want to reiterate, that the plans are tentative. We won't make them final until we've had input. We're in the public review period right now. We posted our report on our website on the 15th of November. There should be some information on one of the handouts. Or maybe it's up here, I'm looking. There's -- yeah. Yeah, so there's -- the handouts have all sorts of information. But it's on our website. The comment period runs through December 16th. And you can -- if you have something you want to say tonight, we have comment cards. You can fill it out before you go. If you want to think about it, look at the report, you can send things in later by mail or email. And we really would like to hear your feedback. So please do let us know what you're thinking. Talk to your neighbors, find out what they're thinking. We really do value your input. Then we will, like I said, sit down with the city, go over things, decide if anything needs to be adjusted or if we're good to go. And we'll make a final recommendation after the first of the year and then write the final report, submit it for approval sometime in the spring, and hopefully have it approved by, I'm gonna say, early summer. Okay, that's everything in a nutshell.
Recreation of the project. Which provides parking area for cars. Address how the cars are going to get on the levee.
The parking lot has an access that's not on the levee. It's not levee, it's not -- you can access it from the levee.
You said there's a trail, asphalt trail on top of the levee.
On top of the levee.
And the parking is where?
On the low, the levee. Oh, you guys know I had to get onto the levee from the parking lot?
Where's the parking lot?
You know, I'm sorry I didn't bring up. I didn't -- I didn't put the picture up because it was really hard to see.
Can you show them on the map there?
Yeah, let's see, hold on. Let me find my Recreation. All right, so it looks like it is -- there's a little road. There's this little road here. So it's here where that road comes in.
All right, Trigone?
Yeah, there. Well, I like that.
Are there questions or comments? We'll be here, and if you want to think about it for a minute or whatever, we'll be here for a little bit and answer questions one-on-one even if you'd like.
Was that levee on the home berm or was it out in the field?
It's right at the -- this is where she pointed. It looked like it was right at the base of the slope.
You talking about the parking lot you just talked about? Oh, um, you know what? I can't remember. I apologize. And I'm not sure. It will say that -- I'm sure it says in the report somewhere. I apologize. I don't really detail, though. We can find out.
How wide a trail were you -- oh.
It is 10-foot wide. Why you guys are looking at us?
Once the final plan would be adopted, just take this parking lot, for instance. If the parking lot needed -- if it worked better for some of the other plans that we had, then it needed to be moved somewhere else. it needed to be moved somewhere else, keeping the same expenditure, dollar amount, and size, or whatever, how set in stone is all that?
I think that if, I think we could make adjustments. What's important are the features, and that their location, for instance, from a land acquisition standpoint, if you already own the land, that's easy to move it around, if we have to acquire something, as long as we're not acquiring a lot more than we were going to acquire already, it should be pretty easy to make adjustments.
So, assuming the plan's adopted and approved next summer, then at some point in the future, we'll look forward to it being funded. Will the funding be based on 100% participation, or will you have attempted before you seek funding to get commitments from the property owners as to what option they choose?
So we will, once the report's approved, shortly after that, we'll start asking for participation, who wants to participate and who doesn't. Based on feedback, we would scale our budget requests based on that. There's, there'll be a finite amount of time that we can allow people to opt in or out because we can't extend this forever, but there should be enough time, a little bit of thought, and for us to put that budget submission together based on participation rates.
Help me out here, John. I think I would miss your request because we'd be putting in a budget for '19 without the full allocation.
Actually, for '19, so we'll, for part of the executive branch, so we'll put together a budget for the president's budget, and if it gets through the agency as a priority, we would ask for probably just plans and specs in '19. And part of that plans and specs effort would be to determine how many people are going to opt in or opt out of the buyout, and any potential changes in the negotiations as far as the mayor was talking about, about specific location. And we would line all that out, and basically a plans and specs time, probably '19 or '20. You know, this is all dependent on Congress allocating money to the project, which we're not, the Core is not in control of that process, obviously. And then after we determine, one, the final design of the recreation, and two, how many folks are going to participate in the floodproofing, then we would budget for the full amount.
Okay, so I thought that referring to the game for construction was right, first we need a budget for design, and that's easier, because the design effort will be similar, no matter how many people are participating.
Basically, it's to come up with a plan and specs for a floodproofing. Now, it will vary a little bit because of the historic structures and the nature of some of those structures. This is pretty unique floodproofing in the Core. Usually, we've done a lot of this up in the St. Paul area and out in the West Virginia area, dealing with a lot of like mid-century ranch-type homes. This is obviously a different situation in St. Genevieve with the historic nature of many of the structures, so. And the team accounted for that, and this floodproofing is probably going to cost a little more than a typical 1950 ranch home that we've done a lot of around the country, but not so much of historic structures.
When you're talking years, you guys, your guys' years always confuse me. What are you, what are we in as far as you are right now?
We're in '17.
Just started '17, October 1st. So we're October 1st to 30th, September are our years, same as you. Same as you.
So the project can get approved next summer, and '18 starts in September, we're going to be able to get in the act by then.
The agency's building the '18 budget right now, so it would be '19 before. Now, there is a process, you know, government's changed a little bit, we used to have earmarks, some folks like to call it congressionally-directed funding, whatever you want to call it, they're gone. So in the past, Congress could say, although this is not in the Core's budget, we're going to add the money to it. And I think that happened a couple times here when we were building the mainline levee. That's not really a possibility now, but there is this work plan process where, you know, the Core, Congress has seen that the Core has a greater need than the administration over the last couple of years, so the Congress has added money to the Core's budget, and that goes through what we call a work plan process. And so the agency comes up with work plan projects that we can execute that year. Plans and specs is pretty easy, so that would probably be one. And then we run that, the administration runs that past the congressional committees and they'll okay it. That's another way to get at funding besides the normal executive budgeting process. But as you know, Mayor, there being earmarks has really changed the landscape for federal budgeting.
When you go to do that, and you get money from Core, is that, is part of the plans and specs, is that a match? Do we match that?
Yes.
Okay. But that's, that's in part of, already in part of your budget number?
Already in the numbers.
It's included in the numbers.
Yeah.
So we would enter into a project partnership agreement at that point, once we receive fundings, actually, that's the first step, that would lay out the cost share. Some of that cost share, normally we could do work-in-kind, but since this is a pre-1986 authorization, we'd have to look into what we could allow for work-in-kind. Obviously, real estate, I think we can allow some of that, some of the other features we'd really have to look at to see what we could allow the city to do.
I, you go to that one for one, they very much do anything.
They should be able to do that, no problem. In fact, as soon as, we could, after the public review period, we could enter into a memorandum of understanding if there was work they could do in advance.
But you basically need to... I'm trying to read your numbers.
Sorry, can I help?
Let's say we do the recreation, and total cost of that is $535,000?
Yes, total cost of that.
Now, if we're going to be doing it, we had this conversation before, we're going to contract for it to be done, and the cost will be the cost. It may or may not be $535,000. That's your estimate of the cost. We can't, we have to wait for the specs because we need to know what standard it has to be built. And is our contribution then going to be the actual cost? Or your estimate of what the cost is?
I don't know at what point we've, like, definitely estimated, but definitely the number that would be the max.
We're only going to get, we're, it's, our, our credit is going to be based on 25% of the actual cost, not your estimate of cost. Right, or 50% in this case.
Right. The difference would be...
No incentive to try and say no.
If you, if you, say you contracted where it came in at $600,000, okay? Well, then we would just look at your contract, did you build what we told you to build? Does it look like the costs were reasonable? Does it, is there any reason why it shouldn't have cost that much? Did you add something to it?
My expectation is going to be lower.
Et cetera. But yeah, the actual, it'll be actual cost, these are just estimates. We will do our own government estimates for comparison purposes, have to compare against whatever you do expend, but when it comes down to it, yeah, it will be actual cost, but those costs will be reviewed by us for reasonableness.
One of these exercises that we did when we were talking about bridge replacements, we talked, we got estimates, your estimates, and then we went out and got estimates based on MoDOT specs, and, you know, it was, it was a whole lot less than what your estimates were. If we talk about waiting for you get the money to design, back to the recreation part, if we wait until you get the money to budget to design that, and then we end up going ahead and doing it, I guess what I'm getting at, can we design it ourselves before you guys even get to that point and still end up...
So you could design it, we would need to review those designs, there'd be a mechanism for doing that, and see if they met our specs, and we would adjust, or have your contractor adjust their specs based on ours for recreation, for the recreation, so...
It may not have to wait till...
It may not have to wait. Now, the deal is, you're moving ahead with the project, and the executive branch can never guarantee that Congress will allocate money. So there is a risk there on the city, you're going to move out, and Congress sees fit to never fund this. I mean, that is a potential outcome, right? Just so we all go in with our eyes wide open.
That's not the issue, the issue was if we spend the money, we want the assurance that we'll get credit for our expenditure against our...
Right, we will get credit, as soon as the report's approved, we can sign an MOU to lay out a work-in-kind agreement, that hey, these elements you guys want to move forward with, that's great, here's what that process looks like. And so that's a binding agreement between the federal government and the city.
And when we would go for approval with Congress, the whole thing is going to get lumped together, two, three, and four?
Well, the good thing about this, I mean, yes, it's drug on forever, Mayor, I got it.
No, no, I...
But, but it's already approved by Congress, so this report doesn't all have to go all the way back to Congress. In fact, it just goes to our division office down in Vicksburg for approval. They've already seen it, this draft, we don't see any showstoppers, right? So we've got that one issue with, this is, these floodproofing is considered a non-standard estate by the Department of Army, we're seeking the waiver for that now, several districts have gone through that process, so we're pretty positive we'll be able to bag that in the near term. But it doesn't require another congressional authorization, just congressional funding at that point.
Okay, but the funny would be, they couldn't, I guess, look at it, if we went ahead with the recreation part and did the whole thing before they funded it all, they're not going to, they couldn't take out number four, phase four, and separate it from phase two and three and not fund...
Saying, hell, they've already done it, why should we fund it?
Exactly. We have an agreement before you do that, though, the work-in-kind agreement where the state, what you'll be credited for. Okay.
The Congress can do whatever.
Yeah, yeah. You're right. But we would have an agreement in place before you moved out. Okay.
But it lays it out, so I see what you're getting at. You guys want to get after the recreation, I got it. And so the lump sum is the cost share, right, Michelle, so the 541, 250, that would be your cost share. So whatever elements of the recreation that you got credit for would go towards that total cost share, not separate little elements. We could set up the MOA that way. The MOA is geared towards the project as a whole.
Does the recreation part include anything up the creeks?
No, we were unable to include anything along the creeks because the non-structural plan only affects the houses themselves, there's no land acquisition involved in it, and our recreation features have to be on project lands.
So it would be strictly on a parallel to the levee?
Yeah, the trail's on top of the levee, and then we have some of the parking lot adjacent to the levee. That's essentially it.
And pay access perhaps to the parking lot?
Yes, I'll have to get back to you on the connection between the trail and the parking lot, I apologize, but I don't know that, I don't think here it is.
He's talking about from Main Street to the parking lot.
Oh, the road?
Division Street, yeah.
Oh.
It's gravel now.
Yeah.
Most of it.
And some dirt.
So I apologize, I don't have the answer to that one. I don't recall that specifically, but it's not, I'm not saying it's not in there, I just don't recall it being called out. We'll have to get back to you on that.
What type of surface do you recommend on the walk pathways?
The, well, the trail on top of the levee, asphalt, and that seems to be the best thing for bikes and walking, so I would imagine that that would be the goal.
Yeah, the street that shows on the map, and I don't, it isn't, some places passable by a sedan, I mean, it's kind of rough.
Okay, okay, I'm not sure we were aware of that, so we'll have to look at that and see what the plan included, if it doesn't include it, I think we'll have to go out and handle that road. Yes, sir.
I've got a question about this wet river floodproofing system. Has that been tried and proven in our area anywhere? Because I see a lot of questions.
I don't know about in the area. Wet floodproofing in and of itself is not super common from the Core's standpoint, and I know that filling the basements is something that we are, have not done commonly other places. So, yeah, you're right, there's a lot of questions, we're really feeling our way along with that one, but we have run it past FEMA, and we've run it past some other folks at the Core with experience in floodproofing, and we're told that it is a good, a good way to address damages. So I can't, I'm sorry, but I can't think of an example to refer you to.
Yeah, just the simple fact of taking that basement floor out, you know, which does stabilize the bottom of those walls, then we're going to let water reach a level, you know, there's a lot of pressure on those walls and stuff, and to fill it with sand and pea gravel is not stabilizing material, that's basically drainage material. I just felt, I've had two buildings that have been flooded and stuff, of course, the first thing we do is let the basements fill up with water, you know, to equalize that pressure, but we never took the basement floors out, and that was, to me, a real key factor to keep those basement walls intact. You know, we're putting inlets, you know, up high to let the water in, which means a lot of area of that basement wall is going to have pressure against it before it is allowed to equalize. And then to fill it with sand, you know, the, one of the big issues now is mold and stuff, how are you going to prevent, you know, any of that, there's vapor barriers. I just see a lot of issues with that, taking the basement floor out, filling that in with a very porous material, not providing any type of pumping system in there to get that water out of, you know, any filled material, but I'd have a lot of questions before I'd ever authorize a building my own to do that.
Mayor, did you have any thoughts on...
Yeah, the main reason far as breaking the basement floor out is poor drainage. Sometimes it's going to depend on what kind of soil you have under it, if it's a clayish soil, it may not drain as well, and you would look at putting a pump possibly in there to help, you know, relieve that pressure, or relieve the water after the flood goes down. One thing with FEMA and wet floodproofing measures is it's supposed to be a passive system where it's, you know, you're not supposed to be using pumps or anything, it's let the water in, it drains out, so no human intervention to keep from damaging anything. Removing the basement floor, you know, could cause some stability with your walls, basement walls how, basically because that's how it's put in, and that's what it's there for, to stabilize the bottom. But whenever you look at design, have them break it out, you look at that, do some construction means to support the floor, or the walls while you break out the floor. And it's not a complete, you know, break it out, remove it, it's break it out to let water drain from, from it. And far as the sand, pea gravel, that would come down to specing the right material to accomplish what we want to do, and stabilizing the wall. We want the same pressure on, that soil is putting on the wall as what we put inside to keep the wall, basically be like a foundation wall of a slab, or a slab, slab house or garage or something.
And that's what Michelle said earlier, that each of these structures will have to be dealt with uniquely, it comes like each structure individually, when you're designing the land.
So will that be done by an engineer, or will that just be done by a contractor?
I think those are some means we're looking into, and it's going to be specced in that way, as it's most likely going to need to be a professional engineer develop plans that, you know, facilitate those questions you have. And, you know, one of the concerns is we want the water to drain to prevent any, you know, mold or anything like that, and if it's a pump, or, you know, you have good soil under it, so it drains. So it would be, you know, an engineer plan to meet the task.
So just for point of clarification, for each one of these homes that you're talking about doing this floodproofing for, you're going to have an engineer give us a plan for each one of those homes?
That would be part of the contracting process, yes.
Additionally, God forbid something happens 10, 15 years down the road, and the walls come in and the house starts to sink. What could an owner do to recoup losses? Would the, would you back your work? Would you insure it? Would you help us recover costs?
This is one of the reasons, it's just a good question, it's one of the reasons that the homeowner has a contract with the contractor directly, it's with your home, modifications to your home, and that contractor needs to be responsible to you for the work that's done.
But if the contractor follows the engineering specifics-
Right, I was about to get to that, so.
Who's liable?
If it turns out that the design itself was faulty.
Yes.
Then, um, then yes, there should be, and I'll have to look into exactly what it might be, there should be a mechanism to get assistance in correcting it.
Right.
And, and, uh, handling damages, basically, okay? Um, if, if it was, but if it failed for some other reason, and you couldn't tie it back to that work, then there would not be, it wouldn't be a tieback to the project, right? So, um-
But if we get these engineering specifications for each one of these homes, and we have a contractor follow those specifications specifically, then you would be backing the work?
Yeah, I think it would be-
Yeah, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, we have a thing, we have a mechanism for when we have, um, design problems, where we come back.
It's a designed efficiency process.
Right, where we come back and correct it.
So the agency designs something and corrects it. We go back and fix, we're fixing stuff in East St. Louis that were designed in the forties.
Okay.
We go back and fix it.
Copy that, I just want to make sure.
But if it was the contractor's fault, didn't follow the specs, it's on the contractor. If it's something unrelated to the project, we don't have liability for that.
Thank you for the clarification.
What about as far as the lost space in those homes?
Right, so I know it's going to be a concern for some folks to lose the basement storage space, um, or potentially living space if it's finished. Um, and also I've heard concerns, we did have a meeting with a few homeowners last week, and there were some concerns about where to put this stuff that's in the basement, the furnace, the boiler, the whatever's down there, where to put it if your house is not large, where would it go? Those are questions I can't answer right now, I can tell you that you will lose the space. Right now, there's no provision to give you, to compensate you with an equal amount of above-ground space. Okay, that's not, not within our abilities to do. Um, it also is, would be incredibly complicated, given there are restrictions on modifying historic structures. So, um, but what we, what we can do is we do have to get those, those, um, systems out of the basement, okay? So we're, that's, structure by structure, we're going to have to figure out if there is a place to put it that fits, if there, if we cannot find a place to put it inside the existing structure, then we would start looking at the possibility of a very small adjustment to the structure, okay? And I don't know what that would look like, or how that would happen, because that would involve talking with the state's art preservation office and the city with your preservation ordinances to figure out how that might look. So, like I said, I, I can't answer the details on how that would work, I can say that there's absolutely, there's not a provision to compensate you for the lost space.
So in the cost of this, uh, wet floodproofing, who's paying for the engineering of each individual home?
Well, we will be doing design work, um, so the engineering, uh, most of it would be done by us. Not most of it, like the details, but we will be doing enough of the engineering to say, these are the specifications that need to be followed, okay? Um, and then the contractor would be handling the details. Um, the contractor would be looking for where to put things, et cetera. So that would be a, probably a back and forth process, is what I envision.
But the structural issues that you were talking about earlier would be evaluated by you?
We would be evaluating some of them, maybe not all of them, but yes, some of them.
Equitable?
Yes.
And I'm new to this, but one more follow-up question, trying to be a little- Is there a mechanism in place that a contractor, a local contractor, can interface with your experts, your engineers, to make sure or get blessed off before they move forward on certain stages of this, these renovations?
So that's a standard deal when we, even when we're building stuff ourselves. We have a resident engineer office down in Jackson, they come out, and they're there when the construction's ongoing. So that's daily interaction of the, um, the engineer, the resident engineer, or his deputy at the construction sites, and hey contractor, these are the specs, they oversee the work pretty much on a daily basis. And so that, that interaction, not just on this type of project, but when we're building levees or pump stations or whatever, that's a pretty live and active thing. Now, disagreements can obviously happen during that process.
Right.
And obviously, the federal government acquires a lot of things, and we have pretty strict processes we follow when us and the contractor get out of touch with each other.
Thank you.
Anything else? Alright, um, we're here, if you want to talk to us on one, we'll be here for a little bit longer than a little bit.
If there's any way we can bring up the map of the reg system feature, I think, I don't know if you have the report on your computer or not.
I do not, I have only the hard copy.
You've got that, I'm not sure. Is there any wifi that we could connect to it and get to the report?
Okay, I, I, it looks like maybe I can bring it right for us, so I will attempt to- Yeah, that's, yeah, and I don't think, and I didn't use it because it's not very clear. No, you got a question? Hold on, I'm going to come to wifi first, I think. Garrett, you named your wifi Garrett.